Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Commissar's Commission. If you're appearing this afternoon, please introduce your names. If you're going to testify, please introduce yourself, tell your names, and be sworn by Ms. Hara. Please introduce your name. Calling Agenda Item Item Number One, Transfer Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Eight Seven Four from WHL Inc. Ms. Hara. Ms. Hara?
Stand by, please.
Okay.
There we go, alright.
I have already read the Agenda Item. I'm asking Ms. Hara for her comments.
If you would, we'll give Ms. Wu the opportunity to enter her appearance, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Nina Huam, behalf of WHL. On my right is the member, Young Po Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hara.
I'll go ahead and get into the record. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the September tenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair O'Donnell and Vice Chairman prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have anybody that would like to testify?
We have no testifiers registered.
Thank you. Commitment.
Motion to approve Transfer Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Eight Seven Four.
Second.
Been moved in second. Can I have the vote, please?
I vote aye.
Vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Eight Seven Four is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. It's safe. Do we have the applicant seated?
Actually, the number two is coming online.
Okay.
Should be momentarily. We're just waiting for the representative to turn on his mic and video.
And that would be Mr. Luke, correct?
That is correct. He is in the meeting room. He just needs to enable himself.
That's fine. Calling Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven One Four from TJHK Company, Inc. Mr. Luke.
Yes. The applicant, Ju Wang, is present with counsel Wayne Luke. We have no objections to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Ms. Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Are there any registered testifiers?
We do not have testifiers registered.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven One Four.
Second.
Moved in second. Commissioners, please vote.
Vote aye.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven One Four is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Two Seven Five from Giovante Pastrami Waikiki. Mr. Gota.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good afternoon, Members of the Commission. Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Giovante Pastrami LLC. We have no changes to the investigative report. Appearing with me is Leland Asato. Applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no problems.
Give it me much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Two Seven Five.
Second.
Second. Commissioners, please vote.
Vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Two Seven Five is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling Agenda Four, Application Two Zero Dash One Four Five Five. Commissioner Lee.
Oh yes, Chair. I'm going to recuse from this Agenda Item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Keith Kyuchi for the applicant SXY Zetwan, Inc. Shifeng Zhang, who is the principal of the applicant, did appear at the temporary license hearing. It will be up the... We have no changes or additions to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Motion to approve Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Four One Five.
Second.
Moved in second. First, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye. For Application Two Zero Dash Two One Four. Mr. Kyuchi.
Good afternoon again, Missy.
Please wait.
Yeah.
Can we have Commissioner Lee back, please?
This will take a minute. He needs to re-enter the room. Commissioner Lee is coming online.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hara. Agenda Item A, Application Two Zero Dash Two One Six Four Four. Mr. Kyuchi?
We're kicking out order number seven. Did he exit? No.
No. I'm here.
Agenda Item A.
Are you... Chairs, I'm sorry. We're taking seven out of order, correct? Since Mr. Kyuchi is already in the room, are you taking number seven out of order?
Uh, yes, we can.
Is he still on? He's still on.
Okay. Okay, let me call number seven.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Keith Kyuchi. The principal of the applicant, Chotan Jayanama, was present at the temporary license hearing and will be present at the public hearing. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report.
Okay. Point of order, Mr. Kyuchi. Call the Agenda Item Number Three. Calling Agenda... Calling Agenda Seven. Application Two One Dash Two One Nine Nine One from Financial Partners, LLC.
Keith Kyuchi for the applicant. Chotan Jayanama is the principal of the applicant, was present at the temporary license hearing and will be present at the public hearing. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number Two One Dash Two One Nine Nine One.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please vote.
Vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
The chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number Two One Dash Two Nine Nine One is approved. We'll go back to Agenda Five.
Ms. Cole's online.
Okay. Calling Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Six Four Four from Kuyashi LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant, present to my left is owner, Mr. Hideo Simon.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Ms. Cole, can you hear me okay? Ms. Cole?
Yes. I can hear you now.
Thank you. Can you address the issue raised in the investigative report?
Yes, the investigative report lists four issues. So with regard to the four issues, that pertains to the eight artists doing business at Square Barrels. Square Barrels is a burger restaurant downtown as a group hub. And at the time in which Square Barrels had initially applied for their liquor license, it was owned by two owners, Hideo Simon and his uncle, Thomas Maloney. And subsequent to that, they had an additional owner come on board, Thomas Ray. And they had inadvertently forgot to notify the liquor commission of the additional shareholder. So when we got the investigative report, we automatically instantly submitted the document to add Mr. Thomas Ray. With the liquor commission documents just submitted, once we got the investigative report, this cures the issue one, three, and four. And with regards to issue number two, with regards to not brewing right now, he has had concerns that he's going to go ahead and start brewing. He has some problems with equipment and the kitchen size and layout. So that's all going to be taken care of. So we have already started and in the process of curing all of the four issues that's listed by the investigator. This particular application is with regards to their second location, which is Kuyashi LLC. And that's going to be operating at the old Ichiriki restaurant. That one is... The corporate documents are all clean on that one. All three owners do own that one. They are operating on a temporary liquor license. We have considered right now, we can open for take-up services. And hopefully, they can open for sit-down soon. As the investigative report indicates, that they have met statutory requirements for this particular location of the application. And we did cure... And we're in the process of curing everything with regards to their first location.
Okay. Thank you very much for your explanation and for being prepared in that regard.
Commissioners?
Sorry. My motion is to approve Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Six Four Four.
Second.
Moved in second. Commissioners, two...
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Six Four Four is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Calling Agenda Item Number Six.
We currently don't have anyone registered for number six.
What is your pleasure or recommendation, Ms. Hara?
Just set it to the side and we can wait to see if someone logs on, logs in later on and just proceed with the balance of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Application... Application One Dash Two Two Zero Zero Two from EARL. DBA EARL. Mr. Kyuchi.
No, this one is Ms. Cole.
Chair, hold one second. I'll almost let you drop down.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, isn't my agenda...
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Min, correct?
Yes, this is number eight.
Yep. Okay.
Point of order, we have all Commissioners back.
Can you guys hear and see... Oh, not me. Okay. Now?
She's on.
Yes.
Okay.
She's on, okay.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Cole present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
We cannot see you. Yeah, just turn your video back on.
I'm pressing on, but it's not letting me.
Okay. We can hear you, Ms. Hara. Can we proceed? Oh, very good, okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant, present to my left is owner, Justin Parby Muller. Would the Commissioner like me to spell the last name? Or should we bypass that?
Please spell it for the last name.
It's spelled P-A-R-R-B-I-D-I-M-O-T-L-A-T-H. And we have no changes to the investigative report.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number Two One Dash Two Two Zero Zero Two.
Second.
Moved in second. Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Before I vote aye, and I apologize, I'm a bit late on this. I hate to be out of order, but I have one question for the licensee.
Proceed, Mr. Commissioner Mia Shero.
Ms. Cole, on Exhibit A, ten-page signature line, the client, and I'm not going to... It indicates that she has been convicted of a felony. I would imagine this was a mistake, but I want a clarification of that.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioners, for catching that part. That is an error. We will go ahead and submit an amended personal history affidavit. Thank you very much for catching that part.
Okay, thank you. And point of order, Ms. Hara, can I just enter my vote at this point? Or do we need to do the motion again?
The preference is to redo the motion.
Thank you, and I apologize to the group.
Not a problem. Commissioners?
Can I restate my motion again? Motion to approve Application Number Two One Dash Two Two Zero Zero Two.
Second motion.
Moved in second. Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two One Dash Two Two Zero Zero Two is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Chair, number six is actually... Has entered the meeting, if you wouldn't mind going back.
I do not mind at all, Ms. Hara. Marked right here. Okay, calling Agenda Item... Calling Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven Zero Eight from H2O USA Inc. Mr. Luke?
Yes, Wayne Luke for the applicant. Our request is made to continue this hearing to December tenth, 2020.
Commissioners?
Motion to continue. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven Zero Eight to December tenth.
Second.
Moved in second. Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two Zero Dash Two One Seven Zero Eight is continued to December tenth, 2020.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine?
Do we know who's here for nine?
I am.
Calling Agenda... Application Number Two One Dash Two 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 Three Three from AJC Enterprises LLC. Mr. Kyuchi.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Keith Kyuchi for the applicant. The applicant, Amatanigawa, is presently on the mainland, expects to return next week. He'll be present for the preliminary hearing. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. On my Exhibit A, four channels, if Ms. Taniguchi's affidavit...
Yeah.
Is that not not notarized? Is that an error, or has a new one been submitted?
It, there's, there's a third page, there, there is a notarized by Randall Murray Power on the, on the third page, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's kind of a, yeah, it's kind of a little disjointed, I apologize, yeah.
Okay, just checking. All right, um, my motion is to approve temp application number two one dash two 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 three three.
Second.
Moved in second, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Has everybody voted? The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number nine, application number two one dash two 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 three three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number ten?
Mr. Gotas is back in the room.
Okay, calling agenda item number ten, application number two one dash two 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 six two from Mama's Place LLC.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Neil Gotas, appearing on behalf of Mama's Place LLC. Appearing with me is Chantel Moniz, uh, the member. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Um, motion to approve temp application number two one dash two 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 six two.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda item number ten, application number two one dash two 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 six two is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Agenda item number eleven?
Oh, um, Newton Chu is, uh, for number eleven. Is he in the room? And he's in the room.
Hello, can you, uh, can you guys see me and hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Let me call the agenda num, um, first. Okay, calling agenda item number eleven, application number two one dash two 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 six five from uh, JMM Management Inc. Please introduce yourself, sir.
Uh, good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell, Newton Chu, on behalf of the applicant, JMM Management Inc. Accompanying me is, uh, President John Morinaka.
Hello.
Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number two one dash two 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 six five.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number two one dash two 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 six five is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Very much. Agenda item number twelve, Ms. Rai?
Is Tina Okira? Do you have a Christina Okira? For twelve? How about a Santana Chalapa? Um, number twelve is not yet in the room. I suggest that you proceed, yeah, and we'll come back for it.
We will, thank you very much. So let's move to them, uh, agenda item number thirteen.
Uh, Mr. Ewalt is in the room.
Okay, fine. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two one dash two two one four five from Hawaii Nautical Inc.
Mr. Ewalt, you need to turn your, uh, you need to unmute yourself. Is this camera on? And, and your video. But at least unmute yourself. Mr. Ewalt, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Correct. unmute yourself.
Uh, my name is Doug Ewalt, D-O-U-G-E-W-A-L-T, from Hawaii Nautical and Corporation.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two one dash two two one four five.
Second.
Then moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number thirteen, application number two one dash two two one four five is approved.
Thank you very much. Aloha.
Aloha.
All right, um, uh, Mr. Kevin Aoki is in the room for fourteen.
Fourteen, yes, okay. Agenda item number fourteen, request number two one dash two 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 one five from Doraku Pacifica Inc.
We, we just need him to turn on his camera and mic. Mr. Aoki, can you hear us? Okay, waiting for his audio to come online.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can. And see you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Kevin Aoki, and I'm representing Doraku Pacifica Inc.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me now? Oh, oh, great.
We can. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two 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 one five.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda item number fourteen, request number two one dash two 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 one five is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Calling agenda, agenda item number fifteen?
This is from, coming from Sweet One One One. Oh, there he is, okay. The requester is in the room.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, request number two one dash two 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 four two from Hawaii Pacific Restaurant Group Inc., DBA Roy's Restaurant.
Good afternoon, uh, everybody. My name is Zameer Malau, uh, General Manager for Roy's Restaurant in Hawaii Kai.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two 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 four two.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number fifteen, request number two one dash two 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 four two is approved.
Okay, she? Okay, uh, uh, we're waiting for number twelve to enter the room.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Number twelve is logging in now, so if we could, um, begging your indulgence, and then we won't have to circle back after we get through adjudications. Is she in yet? Okay, uh, Ms. Okira is in the room, we're just waiting for her to, uh, come online with audio and her camera.
Okay, so let's call agenda item number twelve, application number two one dash two 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 nine one from Cerithra LLC. I cannot hear the applicant.
Oh, uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Christina Okira, um, on behalf of the applicant, Cerithra LLC.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two one dash two 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 nine one.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number two one dash two 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 nine one is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rai, can we move into adjudications?
Yes, we'll just wait for Ms. Neely to come back online.
Very good.
And then you can call the first item.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, good afternoon, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, appearing as Wicker Prosecutor for today's adjudication.
Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, Yaki Yatib Miwa LLC.
Um, this licensee has indicated that they intend to put on test, because the owner is, uh, sick this week. They've requested a contin, two-week continuance to October fifteenth.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Neely, how long did you say?
Um, they requested a continuance to October fifteenth.
Motion to continue agenda item sixteen to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number sixteen is continued to October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Calling agenda item number seventeen, Aloha Beer Company LP.
Uh, Mr. Campbell is in the room.
Aloha Beer Company LP.
Just waiting for his camera and, uh, uh, mic to go live. It's Mr. Campbell.
Are you able to hear me at this point?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, uh, good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell and the rest of the Commissioners. I'm David Campbell from Aloha Beer Company. I'm Director of Operations.
Uh, the charge is on or about October seventeenth, twenty nineteen, in the city of County, Hawaii. Licensee permitted liquor to be consumed on the premises of the licensee or on any premises connected there with, to the patio area. Whether they are purchased or not, and consumption in such area is not permitted by the terms of the license in violation of section two eighty-one, sending you need to apply revise statutes.
Correct.
Mr. Campbell, how would you like to plead?
I would like to plead no contest with an explanation.
Okay, hold on one second. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Agenda item number seventeen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
This is the first violation, um, of, uh, of agents, uh, consuming alcohol in area that was not licensed for alcohol consumption. Uh, I would kind of find a four thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, Ms. Neely, I couldn't get to the end of your sentence. What's your recommendation?
One thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Any comment?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add, I believe there were clerical error made when we opened for business, we were under the full impression that that was a licensed area from day one. And it came to our attention when we went for a special event for him, and Daniel Sato came back and said, hey, there's a discrepancy, and, um, we stopped using it immediately, rectified things, but from our original building plans and such, it was always intended to use as that. And I believe what, what we uncovered was in the very beginning, the, the red line, instead of going across the front of the manai, it went around it. So we were, it was unvided stuff that we were operating illegally in that portion. So it's truly a, we thought we were covered, we weren't, and we took care of it.
Uh, can we hear from Mr. Sato, is he present?
Um, he's coming online.
Thank you.
Provising Investigator, Sato.
Hi, Mr. Sato, um, can you, uh, give us your opinion as to whether, um, Mr. Campbell's statement is true, that it was a error or, um, miscommunication?
So I believe the area in question was, um, for that, what, what appeared to be the parking area. Going back into the file, it, it looks like it needed to be corrected. And we, we corrected that area, and I informed Mr. Campbell of the correction made. So it's actually now extended, and we're within its boundaries, I guess.
Okay, um, he said that there, this was for a special event. Did they request that area to be used for the specialty? Could, could you opine on that?
I did not see the report for this one.
Okay.
Uh, if I may, I could clarify on that.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, it, we were not asking for this, it, it was brought to our attention after we applied for a special event next door. And, um, we provided the maps and, you know, the plot plan. And it was at that point in time was the first that we heard that our plot plan didn't match with what you guys had in your rec. And it was at that point in time was the first that we heard that our plot plan didn't match with what you guys had in your records. And we went back and looked at ours, and so it wasn't tied to the specialty, but it's just that's what brought it to the mission of the commission.
And, okay, so you were under the assumption that that area was within your licensed premises?
From, yeah, from day one, and, and even the, the plans that are in your office showed tables, it's, uh, it was a converted park, uh, it's a carport. We call it the carport. And in the plans that you guys have, it shows tables and chairs in the carport. Again, it was red line, instead of going across it, along our property line, it went in and over to exclude it, which was a mistake because all, all involved in the project, we went into this always with the understanding, um, and even with other departments, that was for service. So, it was a mistake, a clerical mistake, that nobody caught and we, you know, but it was brought to our attention when we went for that special event permit. So, we were really in good faith, we were, you know, thinking we were doing everything, and the second it was brought to our attention, we clarified, we said, well, you're absolutely correct. We consulted with our attorney and he said, yeah, it appears that it was a mistake made. So, we, uh, we shut down service in that portion. And we were lucky enough to, right before you folks, uh, get it corrected, and now it is part of our, of our regular operating, almost legal operating.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to convene us to executive session?
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair, Chair votes aye, we are now in the executive session. Okay, to record, uh, Vice Chairman.
Uh, yes, please note for the record that Commissioner Gannabon is not present or is, has been excused. Um, my motion is to issue a letter of reprimand.
I second the motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Agenda Item Number 17, a letter of reprimand shall be issued.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thanks, we're very appreciative, thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number 18.
That is correct. Is Chelsea Maja on? Oh, Ms. Maja is on.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 18, sent to plea.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission, Chelsea Maja, on behalf of, seated across me is Lady Moriyama.
Madam Prosecutor?
Um, do you wait for reading of the charge?
Uh, yes, we read away, we're reading of the charge.
How would you like to plead?
Would like to enter a no contest plea with explanation.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second the motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote ayes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 18, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is the first violation of, um, of liquor to minor violation. Liquor investigators twice observed the same minor in possession of alcohol. And on the second incident, observed him actually consuming alcohol.
What's your recommendation?
Sorry, got that, I recommend a fine of $1,000.
Ms. Maja?
This was an intent of passing where an individual who was not wearing a wristband, a band, indicating that he was only checked and that there was, that he was 21 years in custody. Um, sent a plea is disciplined and considered that this was left by their security personnel as they had 253 people trying to, to make deals. Um, in the future, they're not implementing a stricter quota system and to increase security for events like this that will target younger individuals.
Okay, thank you for that. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000.
Second.
Then moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 18, the recommended fine is approved. Agenda Item Number 19.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Yamamoto is coming online for number 19.
Thank you.
Hello?
Okay, we can hear you but not see you.
Hello, I'm Landon Yamamoto representing.
Okay, please, please hold on one time, calling Agenda Item Number 19, Bionic Petroleum. Mr. Yamamoto, please introduce yourself.
I'm Landon Yamamoto, representing mother and son LLC DBA, Bionic Petroleum.
The charge is on or about January 25th, 2020, in the city and county of Hawaii, licensee sold or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam, at the licensed premises in violation of Section 281, December E1, of Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Mr. Yamamoto, how would you like to plead?
Please plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second the motion.
Then moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Ms. Darren?
Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 19, no contest plea is accepted.
This is the first violation for adjudication purposes, there was a previous one in December of 2019. Um, I recommend a fine of $1,000, this was, um, part of the alcohol compliance project. It appears that the clerk did not ask for ID, did not ask for, asking of his company.
Thank you, Ms. Neely, Mr. Yamamoto, any comment?
Uh, yeah, we, we're just training now, the new cashier at the time, and I don't know what, can follow the procedure because our cashier designers have the ability to scan ID. They didn't do that, but she no longer works for us.
Okay, thank you, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000.
Second the motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 19, the recommended fine is approved. Agenda Item Number 20.
Hi Commissioner, I'm Sam Chu, last name is C-H-U. I'm here to, uh, interpret for my uncle, his name is Daewooongchu, representing Chu Investment Corporation, DBA Chinatown Liquors.
Thank you, so calling Agenda Item Number 20, Chinatown Liquors.
Okay, the charge is on or about January 25th, 2020, in the city and county of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam, at the licensed premises in violation of Section 281, December E1, of Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Mr. Chu, how would you like to plead, or how would your client like to plead?
She plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
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 Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 20, the no contest plea is accepted.
This was the first violation for adjudication purposes. Um, it was also part of the alcohol compliance enforcement project. It appears that the employee did not ask for ID, did not ask for personal. I recommend a fine of $1,000.
Mr. Chu, does your client have any comment?
Um, when I talked to him, my uncle said he's sorry and he worked, he be more careful. I guess the mistake was happened by his wife. So, she normally doesn't work that much, but on that day, she wasn't working and I guess she was helping. And then he had, she had the employee, but I guess employee went to bathroom or someplace and she made a mistake. So, it means, uh, his mistake, and he say he's sorry and he work harder, make sure he be more careful.
Okay, thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000.
Second the motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
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 The Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 20, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 21.
Currently, we don't have anyone in the room for Hoku Market. Um, I would suggest that we proceed to Number 22 and wait to see if someone appears for, uh, Hoku Market later on.
Thank you, calling Agenda Item Number 22?
Uh, Daniel Lim is appearing on Number 22, and he is in the room.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 22, Palama Express.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Daniel Lim for JNJ Investment Group.
The charge is on or about January 25th, 2020, in the city and county of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam, at the licensed premises in violation of Section 281, December E1, of Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Mr. Lim, how would you like to plead?
A no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second the motion.
Then moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
Aye.
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 The Chair votes aye, the no con, Agenda Item Number 22, the no contest plea is accepted.
Um, this is a first violation, um, this was also part of the alcohol compliance enforcement project. Apparently, the employee did ask for an ID and was shown a vertical California ID. I recommend a fine of $1,000.
Mr. Lim, any comments?
Oh, yeah, the cashier was actually a new cashier and, you know, she asked for ID and the field assistant prompts, um, cashier to enter a date for the birthday, but she just kind of disregarded it and typed in her own date. And, um, it was completely our fault, and she should have been trained better, um, I take responsibility for that. But, yeah, uh, she doesn't work with us anymore, but, um, it was our fault.
I have a question for Mr. Lim. Uh, Mr. Lim, where are you located?
Uh, Aloha Tower.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is, as you well know, the Hawaii Pacific University has a campus and dormitories at that location, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so, I just want to make sure that, um, and I appreciate what you said about taking responsibility, but in addition to that, I want to make sure that you folks are extremely vil- diligent in terms of checking identifications, especially when you have the vertical IDs, it should be a big red flag that this is someone who is underage. So, that's my only comment to you going forward, thank you for listening.
Thank you for the comment, um, you know, the, a lot of our employees, actually the part-time ones, are practicing with HPU. And so, uh, you know, we always remind them, you know, friend or whatnot, you know, whatever happens, if you do sell alcohol to a minor, it's a crime. And so, we, we clarify to them that, you know, if you do that and you get caught, then you will go to, you know, court for a criminal offense. Um, and so, we do the training and we teach them. Um, but, you know, a lot of the students are also out of state, and so they're not familiar with different items and whatnot. And so, um, you know, we try to clarify that, always check and always ask, um, but to be diligent. And so, right now, all of, uh, you know, with, with the stay at home and whatnot, um, the hours are a lot, uh, reduced. But we are trying our best to, to make sure that the cashier is diligent about it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000.
Second the motion.
Moved in second, Commissioners, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye, Agenda Item Number 22, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Lim.
Have any, uh, appearance for Agenda Item Number 21?
Still no appearance for 21.
Uh, the, the attorney for Number 21 did contact James Smith, and, uh, he only recently got discovery and requested a appearance. He rested a continuance for October 22nd, I have no objection.
Motion to continue Agenda Item 21, Hoku Market, to October 22nd, 2020.
I second the motion.
Then moved second, Commissioners, Then moved second. Commissioners, please vote.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, it's continued till October twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Agenda item number twenty-three, we have any administrative matters?
Nothing, nothing over and above the weekly report, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Rai. Meeting adjourned.